Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome everybody and call to order the Carroll County Board of Commissioners' open session for Thursday, March 21st, 2024. As always, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So all of our commissioners are accounted for. Commissioner Kyler is joining us virtually today, and we're happy to have him with us. To anybody who is in the audience today, if you want to make public comments at any point during the meeting, there are salmon-colored cards in the back that Mr. Brown is holding up. Please fill those out and place them up here at the desk where our county administrator typically sits. She'll be in in a few minutes herself. So to begin, let's get into priority, Carroll. Commissioner Garen, will you kick things off for us today?
I will. Thank you, and good morning, Carroll County. I don't have any prepared remarks, so that's always dangerous. But I did want to speak a little bit, just briefly. You'll see the board every morning, and we're about to do the same. We'll get a legislative update from Mr. Mike Fowler. I think he's probably done these for years, and of course, the General Assembly's been in existence forever. So I get questions sometimes as to why is the board paying so much attention to what's going on in Annapolis this year? If you have been paying attention to what's been going on in Annapolis, you'll know that the level of, I say, intrusion upon self-governance throughout the state has been on the increase. This year is no exception. It's reaching amazing levels. I think I speak for probably most of the counties in the state that they just want to be left alone to make their own decisions because they do know what's best. So when you look at the General Assembly and what's happening this year, your first question is, well, what are the politics that are taking place? I've argued multiple occasions, there's no such thing as politics in Maryland anymore. Politics is the art of give and take. People walk away from the negotiating table not completely full and not completely happy with what they get. But nevertheless, that's what politics is. That doesn't exist in Maryland anymore. We have a one-party system. Well, then what are the policies? That's, there are no, there are no policies coming out of the General Assembly anymore. I, you know, whether I happen to have a master's degree in public policy or not from Maryland is beside the point. If you pay attention, policy is about solving problems for people, actual people who need help, and that's not happening. Policy is meant to solve things. Public policy, we saw that really take a nosedive during COVID, and now it just seems like it's getting worse and worse in the state of Maryland. So what are the priorities of the General Assembly, then? Well, I would ask Carroll Countyans to pay close attention, as we are. The main priority is taxes. They are going to raise taxes on over 300 things. I'm convinced of it. They're going to raise sales taxes on things that people have never paid sales tax on. It's going to hurt who? It's going to hurt the poorest among us, the people that are most vulnerable among us. And then they're just going to raise income taxes again anyway. Blueprint's also a priority. I have mentioned on numerous occasions to the people of Carroll County that Blueprint is not a workable plan. It focuses on the wrong things. In schools throughout this state, particularly within some of our cities, schools are rating zero on test scores, zero. That is a public emergency, and it's not in Annapolis right now. In fact, they have chosen to make emergency bills out of things that do nothing for anybody. Blueprint is going to be a 70, I think, if I'm not mistaken, 70 billion, billion-dollar hole over time. $70 billion, and nobody can tell me how it helps a single kid in Carroll County learn. Transportation is an issue for the General Assembly, and that I do understand. And then the actual other priority for the General Assembly this year is climate change. Climate change, I've yet to see any effect of climate change in Carroll County. I know that's a hot topic, but you can't convince me that it's what they say it is and how they're going to tax just individual, regular old Carroll Countyans because the climate change is absolutely ridiculous. So what I'm asking people in the county to do as we start this budget process, there is an abundance of common sense on this board. We may not always get along and see eye to eye. We certainly won't during the budget process, but there is an abundance of common sense. Don't ask us to vacate our own common sense as we work through some of these issues. And when you see us pay close attention to what's going on in Annapolis, you'll know why, because they are having a direct effect on us now. We are really in a struggle to try to maintain our own self-governance. We'll pass ordinances, I hope, to counteract some of these things. I have no intention of rolling over and playing dead on some of the other ones either. But as we move through this budget process, you'll see a lot of reference to what happens in Annapolis because it really does matter now, and people have to start paying attention. So the moral of this priority, Carroll, to everybody watching, as we go through this budget process again, is let's not vacate common sense. It's the number one complaint about elected officials in the whole country is that they lack common sense. I think we've got a lot of common sense up here. Don't criticize, you can criticize us for it by all means, but don't ask us to vacate, you will, or just leave a common sense at the county office building door when we walk in in the morning. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Garen. Very well said. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things. This past Thursday, I was honored and fortunate to attend the, and be one of the judges for the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County's Youth of the Year. So we were going through the selection process. There were about a half a dozen really exceptional members of our community. The motto for Youth of the Year is lead, succeed, and inspire, and I think when they finally announce the winner, we will see definitely an individual that will lead, succeed, and inspire. That individual from Carroll County will go on to the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year State Competition, and then depending will go on to potentially represent us at national. Carroll County's been very fortunate. The last couple of years, we've had a number of young people that have not only been our Youth of the Year here in Carroll County, but they've gone on to represent the state, so I think that speaks volumes for the youth of Carroll County. This past Tuesday was National Ag Day, and of course, as we all know, ag is a huge piece of our community, but also the nation. So we were fortunate to take some time and go to the, the annual Carroll County Agricultural Center meeting. Tuesday evening was myself, Commissioner Rothstein, and Commissioner Kyler. It was very well attended. We had a educational lesson regarding the Huff Barn from the Farm Museum. Gave us some of the examples of what they're doing for the students in Carroll County to educate them as to the process of what has gone on in the past agriculturally, historically. And, you know, I think it's just very important that we always keep in mind that, yes, we have farmers and what is ag? But, you know, ag are the people that feed us and clothe us and provide for us today and every day. So it was a good evening to interact with everybody in the ag community and to reaffirm how we support ag in Carroll County. And last, but certainly not least, I want to mention one thing briefly. As we all know, about a year ago, or a little over a year ago, tragic fire on Main Street with White's bikes, and unfortunately, the loss of their son, as well as the closing of the business. Well, the business has now moved, as many have probably heard. It's located off of Green Street now, and that they are now open, so they will be open Wednesday through Saturday from 1:30 to 6:00, and they'll be expanding their hours. So it's great to see that the White's family is continuing that legacy that they've had in Carroll County. And as somebody that's known them for a long time, it's always good to see our community continue to move past and, and continue what they do best. I just wanted to mention that this morning, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Very well said, Commissioner Gordon. Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Rothstein?
Okay, good morning. Yeah, the Ag Board Dinner was a lot of fun. It's just, it's, you know, it's just good to have the opportunity to have conversations with folks that have multiple generations here in Carroll County and in this community. And those that know me, I don't like using the word constituent. I do like using the word community, neighbors, friends, and family, and that's really what the Ag Board and that dinner reflects. So it's always an honor and actually humbling to attend and participate in that, and also a lot of fun. The, one thing, and I'm going to just dovetail with Commissioner Garen because I 100% agree to a point where he says, you know, let the counties run the counties, leave us alone, but it's not just leave us alone. If you're telling us to do something, ensure we have the resources to do it. Don't just say, get it done. And that's part of MAKO, Maryland Association of Counties, being on that board and going through legislative updates, is if there's a fiscal note associated with legislation, then we are, you know, opposing that type of legislation. You know, we are all for enabling. We're all for allowing the counties to run the counties, but we don't need to be told from Annapolis, this is what you will do and how you will do it by this time. And oh, by the way, you don't have the resources, so figure it out. And that's, that's the definition of blueprint, unfortunately, and we're going to be working ourselves through that, you know, from yesterday till the next few years because it is going to be a massive fiscal note. And Maryland has not figured out how to make that palatable for Carroll County or any of the other jurisdictions for that matter. But I just wanted to add on to that because it's, it's easy to talk. It's easy to say things, but it's, it's a whole different world if you don't commit resources to it. And unfortunately, that's kind of the situation we're in. A couple of very quick things. Tomorrow, I'm going to be with a few folks from Citizen Services and a few folks from our Health Department, and we're going to take a field trip over to Fort Meade, my old stomping grounds. And we're going to look at what's called the Education Resiliency Center on Fort Meade, something I'm very proud of establishing over 10-plus years. And it highlights the, again, resources that are available for our service members, families, veterans, Department of Defense civilians, contractors, that are going through challenging times, whether they did it to themselves or the environment hits them over the head and it's done that way. It could be from a car accident, or it could be from not wearing a seatbelt, I mean, as a simple example. But it focuses on physical, emotional, mental, spiritual, social, and family issues. And the hub is on Fort Meade, but it expands throughout the community. Knowing that 8% of Fort Meade population comes from Carroll County, so it's in our best interest to tie ourselves into that. And so I'm looking forward to highlighting it with Citizen Services and Health Department on how we can be more active with the resiliency programs. And it is all web-based on smartphone and other things, so looking for a lively conversation. And last is Saturday evening. Sunday is Purim, the story of Esther. So those that do celebrate, hug Purim and let it be a good festival time and eat well during it, because I know I do. So with that, I'm done.
Very well said. Thank you, Commissioner Rothstein. Commissioner Kyler?
Hello. I'm not in Carroll County, but I do love Carroll County. And I don't know whether it's the camera and the microphone, I love your guys' comments today. It's, it's like Commissioner Garen started with, we do debate things, but my gosh, the comments today were all great. I think, Commissioner Garen, you may have gritted your teeth a little bit on climate change, but there'll be days when you don't. But you, you hit on it, so thanks, guys. Mentioned Annapolis, and, you know, to me, and I heard the same thing through the school system, the big deal of Annapolis is unfunded mandates. They love to tell us what to do and don't want to give us money to do it. It, it's, it's tough, and Commissioner Rothstein was there yesterday. I was not. And it's, the individuals that we tend to see and meet down there are great people. And I was thinking a little bit about the comments, which I'll touch on because I think most of it's been mentioned, but you look at our Veterans Advisory Committee, you look at the Ag Center. Maybe the problem with bigger government is we don't send the veterans and the farmers there anymore. No offense to anybody in the room, but they're all lawyers and accountants, but whatever. Budget, we've been working on and will keep working on. I think Commissioner Gordon mentioned the, I'm not sure he did, the MML Dinner, but Westminster hosted that group in Westminster, and that was a great dinner. And again, it's, it's, you talk about government, I'm biased, obviously, but the more low it is, the better it seems to work. And it's great there, seeing all the jurisdictions, sitting and talking with them, and, and hearing their ideas. Veterans Advisory, again, same thing. You got a group meeting. It's a diverse group, but they're all there for one reason, the veterans, and that's a great meeting. The, the Ag Center Dinner, that was a great night, and I want to, I want to make one strong point about it. They complimented the commissioners a dozen times. No offense to us that were there, they didn't compliment us so much individually. It was the commissioners. The commissioners work with us. The commissioners do this. Here's a check for the commissioners. It's, it's, it's great to hear that, and they're a great group. You look around that room and, you know, I've told people that that proudly say, you know, I paid for college. I have an investment. Well, a lot of that room spends more than that on fertilizer and seed every spring, hoping it's not going to be a drought. It's not going to rain too much, and they, they have a lot of guts. National Ag Day, that was super. That coincided with this. And then I've always got to mention wrestling. I'm at the NCAA Division One Nationals, 330 wrestlers, if they all made weight. 15,000 to 18,000 spectators, and it's in Kansas City. And I always try to say I love Carroll County, but back right after 9/11, the first NFL games that they had after that, my two sons, for their birthday present, they came to Kansas City to watch a Chiefs game because they were fans, whether the team did or not. Their first comment when they landed and got to a hotel is, I love the Midwest. You know, you said you were sending us to Kansas City, but this is like being back in Carroll County, you know, except it's flat. But yeah, so I'm looking forward to a great weekend here. Rhonda's going to come join me. I, I got dressed this morning without her for probably the first time in 50 years, but I made it so far. So thank you, guys, and thank you for the great comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kyler. You know, it's kind of nice to be the last person to go today because I don't have to say as much as I normally do, so I thank everybody for that. And I will, you know, agree with everything that's already been said by my fellow commissioners, my friends up here, that, you know, local government is the most responsive, and we need the freedom to be responsive. And, you know, what's a blessing for us is that we know our citizens as individuals. We know the people that we serve personally, and that, that really is a tremendous blessing. So along with my fellow commissioners, and along with Deb Bethingham and Ted Zaleska, I had the privilege of attending the Maryland Municipal League Quarterly Chapter Dinner in Westminster. And I wanted to add a couple of comments onto what Commissioner Kyler said about this because it's, you know, these sorts of meetings bring together elected officials, not just from across the county, but we get people from out of state, from out of county as well, across the state. And when we attend these meetings, not only do we have the opportunity to speak with our fellow elected officials and other administrators and public servants, but we're able to demonstrate a genuine concern and interest we have in the partnership that we share with them. And Commissioner Kyler, because you are in Kansas City, we'll have to do tie checks next week. Last, so finally, we'll get into our agenda for the day. We have a retirement this morning for Ronald Han, and Commissioner Rothstein, I believe you have something for the occasion.
I do. Gentlemen, why don't you come on up?
Morning, everybody. Oh, now just one last quick thing. Again, if anybody here in the audience would like to make public comment, once again, there are cards at the back, salmon-colored cards that should be filled out and given to Roberta.
Okay, so I have a few thoughts and comments, ideas I want to share, but let's start with you. Doug, you want to lead us off?
I absolutely would. So today, we're here to recognize and celebrate because he's made the decision, Ronnie Hand's long career here with Carroll County Government. When, when I came into my role in public works, you know, we rely a lot on records. We rely a lot on what are called the, the, the old books, which are when things were written down, whether it was a road deed or what have you. And then there was always my first person, which was Ronnie, meaning that living history in well over 40 years here with the county, and you just can't get any better than that. So when you had a question about something that existed, that happened, that we did, we as a county, that we were involved in, have you ever heard of this? The answer was always yes. This was my experience and where, where it went. We are fortunate, when I say we, we all, the customers of Carroll County are fortunate to have had Ronnie's service over the years and his dedication to the customers, 24/7, 365, as a public works first responder out there doing it for everyone. And I have told him many times, and actually, I've tried since he's announced his retirement to coax him back, but he, he has said no, and we will miss him. And when I say we, I think that's anyone that's ever met him and, and all of our customers. So thank you for your service, Ronnie.
I appreciate it. When you started, when you had hair or what?
I had some hair. My, I've been follically challenged for, for a good deal of my adult life.
Okay, I'm just curious, Jim. I mean, what are your thoughts? Not about his hair or head, but about Flash?
Well, if, I, you know, we had a little questionnaire that they wanted to have sent over, so I, one of the first words that I put on there was relentless. When he wanted to do something or had some purpose, he was, he would never give up until he got his way. So that was the relentless part of Ronnie. I mean, if he wanted something on his trucks, tools, whatever it was, he wanted it, he would badge you and beat you to death until you got it for him. So that was one of the main ones that we sent over was relentless, so. But as a coworker, he went above and beyond. He was there. He's one of the first ones there in the morning, and he was one of the last ones to leave every day that he was there. So I, I can't say enough about Ronnie. He was, he's a great worker, a great coworker. He always looked for things to improve the roads department, just anything he could do, he did it, and we, we're going to miss him.
I, I appreciate that. And I take it, being relentless, it was all with good intent and good decisions?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
It wasn't relentless like putting, painting a wall pink as opposed to blue or something like that? Okay.
Not that he wouldn't decorate his office area, but...
So I understand Flash is because you get things done, but I mean, is there any, like, I mean, are you like a DC comic-type of guy where Flash is something, is a nickname given to you, or who, who gave it to you first?
Kenny Hawk. He was a supervisor years ago.
Yeah.
And I was in the parts department at the old shop.
Yeah.
And I was going out getting other parts, and when I came back about an hour later, Buckingham, the people there couldn't find the part they needed. And I came, and they yelled at me, where it is? Up the steps, and went down, it came in a flash. That's how I got my name.
Okay, I mean, see, there's...
Took them two, three hours to look for it, and I was upstairs and backed down in a flash, put it in my hand, you know, what they needed.
So it's not necessarily that you were fast, it's just that they were very slow.
I knew where everything was.
There you go.
I knew, I knew everything was. I was young then.
I, one little thing that we, that Flash is, is one of his nicknames, but one day, we were on the jobs, and there was, you know, you always find little things on the job. Sometimes it's kids' toys, whatever it was. Well, one day, there was Little Flash Gordon. So he's had it ever since and has been on his desk.
It's up on the...
It's up on his calendar or his court board, yeah. It's a little teeny Flash Gordon, and that's, it was ironic.
Like to tell stories.
One time...
Do people like to listen to the stories?
Yeah. One time, me and him was going to check a pipe, and I walked over the bees nest, and he walked behind me, and he got the storm.
I always blamed it on him, too.
Well, as you should. Nah, it's good. So you're going to retire? You're going to retire in the area?
Yeah, I'm going to retire in Hampstead. Been a long time. I've been here since I got out of school in 76, so...
Any exciting plans for what comes next?
Fishing.
Fishing?
Fishing.
Avoiding bees?
Something to do, but...
Yeah.
I'm just, I guess I'm ready to go, but I've been here probably most of my life and probably more than with my family here. So it is your family. Here's your home.
I did notice he took a pack of comment cards on the way in, so I'm not sure if he's coming back later or what's happening.
Next, but...
He's preparing for his transition into civilian life.
There you go.
You like freshwater fishing or saltwater?
Yeah, I get a pretty boy fish water, freshwater.
Yeah, yeah.
Freshwater, but like I said, I've been here through the blizzards, the floods, everything, you know, ice storms. So I've done it all.
So if you're 40 years and...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, I apologize.
Forty-seven.
Wow. If you were to pick a moment, a memorable moment in that 47 years, what was it?
Oh, God.
One.
You're putting the pressure on.
So much. I guess in the storms and...
Yeah.
Storms and stuff, and the way we handle things, you know, the flooding and stuff, you know? You have to coordinate and get people going, and it comes to you, and you get things done, you know?
Yeah.
And we, you know, I'm over there at Shock Road, and, you know, down that area, there's a lot of flooding. There, River Valley Ranch, all the picnic tables went down the river one time.
Yeah.
You know, all that stuff, and the ice storms, you know, trees are falling, and you're cutting the trees off the road.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, and I'll tell you, leadership, being charismatic, and it sounds like you're very charismatic, where people want to be there with you and follow you, so...
I want everybody to be safe.
That's awesome. Okay.
Tell them about April first. Go ahead.
Oh, April first, I'll be a concerned citizen.
There you go.
A concerned citizen?
Huh?
Oh, great.
I'll be a concerned citizen, April first.
Okay, maybe I'll be the same time I take Commissioner Vigliotti's tie off. But, gentlemen, any comments?
Just appreciate your dedication and forty-seven years of service. I think determined would probably be a good word for you if you're talking, they were mentioning how, you know, you wanted to get what you needed to get for the job, and I think, I think that's, that's an admirable quality to have because, you know, sometimes there's challenges and roadblocks, not necessarily for any specific reason, but appreciate all the hard work and you dedicating forty-seven years to the people of Carroll County, so thank you.
Well, there's one thing I fought for that I haven't got, and that's assault done for area two.
I know.
We're gonna need one.
I know, it's on the list.
Commissioner Kyler, you...
I fought for that for a lot of years.
Yeah, when we're still looking at it, so, trust me.
Okay.
You're good, Commissioner Kyler.
Just congratulations, and people like you, it's, we hear some complaints, but you don't hear always the positive stuff. You mentioned storms and problems, and I think people like you are one of the reasons why most Carroll County residents just take it for granted that the road's gonna be open, that I'm gonna be able to get out. So, thank you for your service and leadership.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will echo that again. Thank you, sir, for all you've done, forty-seven years of a very dangerous job, by the way, so I appreciate you very much, and congratulations.
I wish you the best, and I pray that God blesses you and your loved ones in every single possible way, and I really do hope you enjoy your retirement, and you're always welcome to come back, no matter what Commissioner Rossin says, you're welcome to come back.
You know, the point that was made, you put yourself in harm's way, and it is very selfless. People don't recognize that. When you're going into a storm, you're, you know, just like fire and police, you're walking into a challenging situation, and every day you did that, you were walking into that, and sometimes that's just lost. And people don't capture it. They want their roads clear, they want to be able to get from point A to point B, but someone's gotta get there and do it, and that's you, so. And we've seen some horrific accidents and, you know, challenging times, so I really, to me, you know, from a, from a green suitor, that's what I appreciate most, that you walk into those challenging times. So, thank you so much. And with that said, forty-seven years, I got a thank you, a certificate, and a picture, okay? So, why don't we come up here?
Do you want to read the certificate?
Oh, I gotta read this always.
I was gonna say.
Oh, man. You, Ronnie L. Flash Han, Han.
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 Yep.
At first, I thought I was gonna say ham. Okay, in recognition of over forty-six years of dedicated employment, Carroll County Government, your exemplified high standards of service while performing the duties of various positions held over these many years. Labor One Special Projects, Maintenance Workers One and Two, Bureau of Vehicle Maintenance, Road Equipment Operators One and Two, Foreman, and fat, and lastly, retiring as an Area Roads Chief of Bureau of Roads Operations. Your forty-six-plus years of public service career with Carroll County Government shows your high work ethic and diligence led to positions with increased responsibilities and expanded obligations. We wholeheartedly thank you and wish you a long and healthy retirement. And signed by all five commissioners, thank you so much, okay?
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Commissioner Kyler, make sure you still smile in the picture.
You guys should make a silhouette of each other, one of us, and then when we're missing, you can like stand it in.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, the judge, right?
Yes, sir. All right, so first up on the agenda, discretionary grant application and acceptance of award. Judge, come on down.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you today?
Burke, Ms. Wyndham.
Alone, unafraid.
Commissioners, Commissioner Kyle, Kyler, Kansas City, how are you?
Well, thank you, how are you?
Well, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this morning, thanks for my position on the agenda, although you may be follow the Flash. Not an easy act to follow, forty-seven years of service to any agency is certainly a tribute to him and to the county.
Is there a comic book character you'd like us to refer you to use?
Well, you just stole my thunder, Mr. Burke. Top of the morning to you, I forgot to wish you a happy...
Well, you got Ant-Man over there, so...
So, thanks for the opportunity this morning to come before you. We are requesting, I am requesting, on behalf of the Carroll County Adult Drug Court Program, approval of a grant in the total amount of four hundred and eight thousand, forty-one dollars and eighteen cents. The majority of that grant money is provided by the Maryland Judiciary Office of Problem Solving Courts, and we ask, as we have historically in the past, for about a one percent match from the county in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And that's because there are certain administrative expenses that the judiciary grant does not cover, office supplies, cell phones, that sort of thing. And so, we ask for that contribution from the county. I've had the opportunity to address you in the, in the past and tell you a little about Drug Treatment Court. You know, it's a court-supervised drug treatment court program. We currently have about forty participants in our adult drug treatment program. They range in age from, I think our youngest is probably in his young twenties, and then we have individuals up into their fifties and sometimes older than that. Many of these individuals have struggled with substance use disorder for most of their adult lives. I was talking to a young man the other day in court last week who's twenty-eight years old and who has been struggling with substance use disorder since he was seventeen, right? And so, these are individuals who have had encounters with the criminal justice system. They're nonviolent offenders. We do not, not, violent offenders are not eligible for Drug Treatment Court, but these are individuals who have committed crimes largely as a result of substance use disorder, and we provide a great degree of structure for them, regular attendance at court hearings, treatment requirements, self-help meeting requirements, meetings with our case manager who is assigned to them, who is their individual point of contact, the requirement that they either be employed or do volunteer community service. And so, I know many of you have attended our graduation ceremonies, I appreciate that. I don't know if the invitations have gone out yet. Our next graduation ceremony is on May first of this year at four-thirty at the Carroll Community College, which the commissioners have graciously approved our using, I think for, probably since we came out of the pandemic, since about 2021. And it's a, just a terrific site for our graduation ceremony, so. We appreciate, I appreciate, the county's support of our Drug Treatment Court Program. Happy to answer any questions you might have about our request here this morning.
Gentlemen, I need...
Judge, I'll just say, and you know how I feel about this, it's awesome, and you, along with your team, do so much for our community and those that are in challenging times, you get them back up on their feet. I mean, I just talked about resiliency programs, you know, on installation, but hearing, and I say it often, when somebody stands up there and says, you know, I've done wrong, but fortunately, I've done wrong here in Carroll County, and I got arrested because there is a program and process and caring approach to get them back on their feet. You know, if it was up to me, if I had the opportunity to resource you double and triple in whatever necessary, that no one is left behind in this process, I'd be all for it. So, I appreciate you going after every dollar, every cent you can, but I applaud the work, again, that you and your team do on this. It's so, so important, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. And for your citizens who are watching, who aren't aware, I know you're aware of this, but aside from the societal benefit and cost savings of our program, of course, there is a monetary savings, a tremendous cost savings for the county. It costs much more to incarcerate an individual over the period of time that that individual will be in Drug Treatment Court than the funds that are dedicated to our Drug Treatment Court Program for an individual participant by exponentially less expensive for individuals to not be incarcerated and have the opportunity to, to complete our program, so.
Commissioner Kyler, you have your hand up?
Yes, yeah, awesome program, thank you so much, and like your last point, this is way cheaper than incarceration, but I think it's amazing, you're bringing over four hundred thousand dollars to Carroll County for a cost of four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five bucks. I think Commissioner Rossin spends more than that on lunch some weeks, so that's a heck of a good deal.
I'll just echo my colleagues' comments and truly appreciate your, all your involvement and your staffs. I think, you know, as a number of us have attended the graduation programs before, I think it, it's a testament to Carroll County and what we try to do to help those in our community, and that's something that I think sets us apart from some other areas and how we approach that, so I just want to say thank you.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY25 Office of Problem Solving Courts discretionary grant application and accept the award.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like son, motion carries. Commissioner Kyler, you're good?
For the record, I saw Commissioner Kyler's hand raised. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good week, I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Next, we have the legislative update with Mr. Mike Fowler. Mike, good to see you, how are you?
Good morning. Hi, guys, we're getting a little late.
That's all right.
Paper, I know for those of you who like...
Thank you, sir.
We're used to it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
So, we're close.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, I got my email, so I'm following along.
Good, good. So, we had a big day, on Monday was crossover. Now, just to temper expectations, that does not necessarily mean that if a bill did not cross over, that it's dead. It's really just a milestone, it's two-thirds of the way through, it's a target, try to have your bills moved by then, but there are a number of bills that did not make crossover that are obviously still in play. So, we can't necessarily say that these bills are dead, but for those we don't like that did not cross over, that's a good thing. I also gave you some additional dates here that refer to after a bill is passed, how it's enacted. The governor has so many days to sign, if he doesn't sign it, the bill goes into effect. Another important date, though, is April first, and we'll talk about that in a second. That's when the budget is due to the governor. And that is, as you've probably heard and read, and we'll talk about, is in flux. On your legislative proposals, we're all in good shape, all the bills passed both houses, with the exception of the one where we withhold permits for unpaid personal property taxes. It did get through the House Committee, though, which is a good sign, so I'll be talking to the, to the E and T Committee to ask them to pass the Senate version onto the floor, and we'll be good with those, but they're all looking good. There was an interesting, during session, there was an interesting exchange on the sheriff's salary. If you didn't see it, you might want to revisit it. I won't go into details on that, but the bill did pass. So, on the budget, we've got a tale of two cities here, the House and the Senate differ greatly on how they're approaching the budget. The governor and the Senate are firm in their rejection of taxes. Senator Ferguson, the President of the Senate, has said both iGaming and combined reporting are no-gos, so it sounds like maybe they'll be open to the fees that are, that are considered. You'll see that the, the Senate has temporarily funded the highway user revenue, and they gave back about half of the cut to community colleges. On the House side, they've got a package of revenue, about one point two billion, so nine hundred million in fees and taxes, and another three hundred million in the iGaming They're gonna increase tolls, registration fees for vehicles, they're gonna eliminate the tax exemption on trade-ins, so if you, if you trade in a vehicle on a new car, that comes off of the sales price, now you won't get that exemption in their package.
Mike, is there, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion about reconstructing the formulas that they use for things like HUR? Because I know there's been some talk about, can we revise the formula so that we can say, you know, next year, we fund it a hundred percent even though the amount is less than it was this year?
Yeah, so, the, the BAFA is where the, where the formulas are, and so, essentially, what I think the, the Senate did was to, to basically cut that formula down a couple of pegs and leave it that way going forward. The House doesn't, hasn't taken any, any steps in that way. They, they want to fully fund highway user, transportation generally, which of course, transit is a big part of that, but they, they want to fully fund transportation. Also, the, the increase or the tax on services is not part of that. And I, I gave you a link to a Maryland matter story, which gives you a lot of detail on, on what's going on there, but I thought it was, it was interesting. We, we heard at Mako that there are some, I guess, negotiations that are taking place, that the House is a little hard in their position, and maybe they won't pass the Senate's bills, so I think a lot of that is, is posturing, I think they'll come to some agreement, but it sounds like Senator Ferguson is, is playing hardball, at least on combined reporting. And that combined reporting is worldwide combined reporting. There are other states, about half of the states in the nation have combined reporting, but no one has worldwide combined reporting, so we'll see where that ends up. So, I kind of divided this into what, what sort of made crossover and what's moving and what's maybe unlikely to move, again, with the caveat that nothing's really firm until twelve oh one on signee die. So, the governor's legislative package, there were about sixteen bills, he had his, his thrust is really, and, and this is why he's opposed to taxes, he wants to grow the economy, he wants to meet these fiscal challenges we have by growing the economy, expanding... expanding opportunity for people. I think that's admirable. The part of that package that we were the most concerned about was the zoning portion, where the affordable housing component may have some effect on Warfield. The adequate facilities issue still remains in that bill, where they have the ability to sort of override that to some degree. So, that is still in play. It didn't get out of the House, but again, that's one of the ones that we know is going to move. Interesting on the licensee locations on cannabis. So, the zoning aspect of cannabis. The Senate version actually creates a half-mile buffer between dispensaries. They did not increase the distance for pre-existing sensitive sites. It remains at 500 feet. There's some discussion that they might expand that to 1,000, but that remains 500. They also added a 100-foot buffer from residential for a dispensary. So, that needs to be, that will go to Conference Committee and get worked out on those details. The workers' compensation bills, so this one, that is the Capes Act, that adds thyroid, colon, and ovarian cancer to the list of presumptions. That's going to pass. The Professional Volunteer Firefighters Innovative Cancer Screening Program, the Senate version passed. I suspect that the House will follow on that as well. Our battery safety bill passed. The Commission to Advance Battery Safety, that passed. There was a bill to establish a licensing program for homeless shelters. And we talked about the conditions of that were pretty challenging. That's now been turned into a study over the interim. Mental health and voluntary admissions, that was a bill intended to try to reduce the overcrowding in emergency rooms. Looks like that's going to move in some form. A bill that was problematic for, it's House Bill 1147, was, would have said that any playground surface material containing PFAS would have to be removed. That was going to be a problem for a lot of the counties, if not all. That's been now amended to say, no new material that contains any PFAS. And the last PFAS bill is the one that would require industrial uses to limit their PFAS introduction into the county wastewater system. So, what did not make the cut? We talked about the student member of the Board of Education having voting authority. That did not move. The PTSD presumption for first responders didn't move. A bad bill that was going to address moving utilities for state highway projects did not move. Also, another presumption bill for long COVID. Yeah, the student members, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. The student member did not pass. But also, the bill that you had asked about last week, which was Senate Bill 1032 and House Bill 1400. This would authorize a student who was bullied to basically retaliate, to defend themselves, or to stop the threat. The hearings were, I think, relatively positive. The bill didn't move. But I think that Delegate Tomlinson made a good case, and he got some sympathy from folks on the committees. But I think that it would require the administration to investigate and try to make some determination on who is at fault, whether the person that retaliated. Because a lot of school systems simply just suspend anyone involved in any of these altercations at all. So, there was some pretty good testimony, but in the end of the day, it didn't make it forward. We had a couple of bills that would require the state to fund sidewalk and bicycle pathway maintenance. I don't think that comes as any surprise that they failed. Another one we talked about was school bus stops on a undivided highway of five lanes or more, and that did not move either. I think some of that may be contained in the other bill that is moving. Senator Hester's, no, excuse me, this was not Senator, this was Senator Elfris' bill, the Brighter Tomorrow Act. That had a lot of property tax exemptions for solar, required prevailing wage for the workers there. And that was the one we talked about, the fee in lieu of taxes, where there was going to be a $2,000 fee. And Caroline County, I think, negotiated a much higher fee in lieu. So, that kind of complicated the bill. So, that was one of the things that weighed it down. So, that did not make the cut. One that we were concerned about was Program Open Space, where land from Program Open Space that was determined not to be needed anymore could be used for solar. That gave a lot of heartburn, I think, to the Program Open Space advocates. That is not moving. The bill that would raise the transfer tax, that's not moving. The bill we talked about, nonrecurring costs, where they would, when the county and the Board of Education agreed on nonrecurring costs, then that could be moved up in the schedule to try to help inform you in your budget process. Did not make the cut. Senator Hester's bill, which created a Solar Advisory Commission in the Department of Natural Resources that manages the Power Plant Research Program, which is the one that looks at energy generation sites and sort of marshals that through the state process. This also had, we talked about the development of state standards on these more than two-megawatt, where you don't have the authority now, that the creation of some kind of state standards that had at least a geographical component to that that would look at the geographic diversity across the state, that was contained in here, as well as the consideration of state land for solar, which was not, really not part of any discussions that I've heard, where we would actually conduct a study of state land that was appropriate for solar, even if it was just parking lot canopies on a park-and-ride, for example. So, that was part of this bill as well, which did not move. So, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of work over the interim again on solar, addressing the issues that we're seeing in these bills that failed. Also, the bill that would require the counties to adopt the solar app program for residential solar installations. There's really no need to do that in one fell swoop. There may be counties that, well, in fact, there are counties that have a backlog on residential applications. Carroll is not one of them. We have a process that moves smoothly. So, we are not going to have to adopt this program that would require us to, you know, to take some additional steps to integrate that into the programs we have. The workers' compensation bill that dealt with concurrent employment. So, if you had a second job and you got injured in one of the jobs, the other job would have to pick up the slack on that. That's out of the question now. Also, the referendum issue we talked about last week, where you would be obligated, I think if they came in with 40% of the affected residents, that you would have to accept that annexation request. And lastly, I'm glad to see this one failed too, the Maryland Predictable Scheduling Act. So, that did not move forward. That was the one that you had to develop a schedule two weeks out, and that was really tough for small businesses. So, again, all in all, there's still some problematic legislation that's still out there. I think the 800-pound gorilla now is the budget. So, we'll have to see how that goes. I think in the near term, the HUR revenue is okay, at least for the next two years, because of the temporary influx that the Senate did. And of course, if the House gets their way...
For the next two years or one year?
I think it's two.
Okay.
Actually, no, you're probably right. I think because they wanted to revisit it again.
Yeah.
The Senate wants to take this on a year-by-year basis.
That's what I believe.
Yeah, you're right.
If they stabilize the one, but I like two better.
Two would be better, yes.
Yeah.
From Mike's lips to the legislators' ears.
They'd be so lucky.
It's interesting that, you know, in the Mako conversations, you know, we don't talk about the inside baseball of the discussions, but the conversations on how the Senate and the House are looking at the budget so differently. And the Senate is aligned with the governor's intent of not touching taxes and focused on economic growth, where the House is not. You know, it's, because people are like, well, why are they doing that this year? This is the year to raise the taxes because it's, you know, politics and all this other stuff.
Election schedule.
Election schedule. But I don't know. I mean, we'll see what happens, but you know, if it goes in the Senate's side, that's a good thing, so. I mean, you're looking at 3 billion in the next, what, three years? And almost all of it is blueprint. Yeah. I mean, there are a number of ways, you know, to approach it. If blueprint is untouchable, it's even more challenging. But if they decide they want to take, you know, a year, push it out a year, even two years, that might give them a little bit more ability to do this. But I don't know if you can grow Maryland's economy by 3 billion in that short period of time, so. Really tough decisions. Just, you know, for the good of, again, the audience, the value of going down to Mako, the Legislative Committee. This was the last for this season for us going down there. But we had the Comptroller, Brooke Lierman, and the Treasury Secretary.
The Treasurer, Derek Rass.
Treasurer, yeah. Both participated in the Mako conversation, and they shared what their priorities were and, you know, their expectations, you know, which is good. It gives good insight. And I will share that with my colleagues, some of the comments that were made. I took some, especially with the Comptroller, took some notes. I think one of the biggest things you discover there is how much the counties have in common. We talk about the large counties and how they differ. And but the legislature is affecting all the counties in the same way. And so, that's why you find so much common ground with people that are ideologically different than you. From a pragmatic and governing approach, they're facing the same challenges.
Gentlemen, any more thoughts, questions for Mr. Fowler?
This friction, so-called friction, between the Senate and the House, I mean, that's just political theater, right? I mean, are we supposed to actually believe that they're not working together and that they're not trying to do their best for the governor at the same time? Or is it actually...
It's normal. You see this every year. I mean, they, the House, it's coming from the Ways and Means Committee primarily, because they're the revenue-raising committee. But it's not unusual to see this, particularly when you're in a challenging fiscal condition. You know, we're not in a recession, so there's no sort of, other than inflation, I mean, there's no real external forces on us. We've sort of created our own problems, so to speak, with this. So, they will come to some agreement. I think at this point now, it's two against one, right? You've got the governor and the Senate in the same posture. So, I think you will see, you will see probably combined reporting and iGaming fall away from the House's proposal. And you'll probably see the Senate maybe accept some of the fee increases. Talking about registration fees on vehicles, you know, I mean, adding the fee on electric vehicles, that's been an issue for some time now because they don't pay a gas tax. So, you'll probably see that. And what will that amount to? I don't know. It's certainly not going to be the 1 billion that the House is proposing. But, I mean, combined reporting is nothing new to the legislature. That's been in play for probably 15 or more years, that it seems to get proposed every couple of years. But that's a big step, a very big step. Thank you. Isn't it, goes in the same kind of train of thought, it's a carrot and a stick, you know, and they're using shock trauma as the carrot. They're saying shock trauma needs X amount of dollars, and the only way we can get there is through, you know, these increased taxes that the House is recommending to include iGaming. And that's like, they're saying, oh, all the proceeds for iGaming is going to go into the shock trauma, I believe. And, you know, just like they talk about cannabis sales going into blueprint, you know. It ain't a whole lot, you know, so.
And not only that, as we know, you know, historically, the General Assembly in the past has said, okay, we're going to charge a tax on this, or we're going to take revenue from this or that, and we're going to put it toward education, or we're saving the bay. And then they consistently vote to take money that was appropriated for one reason and do something else with it, so. There's always that concern.
Slots for kids.
Have you heard much, I know there was, I believe, conversation that the assumption was this would die in session, but any update on the homestead tax credit for secondary properties?
Yeah, that did move. There were also two other bills that I think dealt with that regarding social security income. And there was another proposal at the same time. Yet none of those have moved.
Okay.
Most of the tax bills, the individual tax bills, aren't moving on their own. They're being absorbed into the House package.
Thanks. Ms. Wyndham, do we have any public comment relating to legislative? No? Okay. Well, Mr. Fowler, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have approval to purchase restored, I'm sorry, approval to purchase Phase 2 roof replacement for the county office building. Department of Public Works attending. Gentlemen?
Morning.
How are you both today?
Good morning. The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities, requests your approval to complete Phase 2 of the roof replacement at the county office building using Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $1,298,572. Garland DBS Incorporated was awarded a competitively bid contract from Omnia Partners. J.B.K. Contracting of College Park, Maryland, an authorized agent of Garland DBS Incorporated, will perform the work. This amount is within the adopted fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be required.
Morning, Commissioners. County office building roof was installed over 30 years ago. Due to the age of the roof and multiple repairs, the roof has reached its end of life. In Phase 2, we'll be installing a double-ply modified flooding gravel system across the entire area. All the ductwork that's currently on the roof will need to come off of the roof to install this roof and also reinstall once the roof is on. The roof system will enhance the durability of the roof along with using new, energy-efficient materials such as insulation or value. Garland DBS has completed Phase 1 of the project, along with multiple projects throughout the county, with great success. The roof will come with a 30-year warranty as well. So, if there's any issues after Day 1, we call Garland, who is the rep. They call their contractor out to replace or repair anything that's needed. So, with that being said, you have any questions regarding the Phase 2 process? Just to say about Phase 1. Phase 1 was two years ago, when we did the cupola over top of the roof, all the metal wrapped around the building. So, that was Phase 1. And also, while we were doing that, we replaced about five foot of the section of the roof underneath. So, now, it's just the flat areas.
Okay. I move the Board approves the roof improvements at the county office building to Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $1,298,572.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have approval to purchase restorative coating and flashing for the Carroll County Public Library, Eldersburg Branch.
All right. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to remove and replace the flat roof, install new flashing and counter flashing at the Carroll County Public Library, Eldersburg Branch, using Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $39,481. Garland DBS Incorporated was awarded a competitively bid contract from Omnia Partners. Roddenruff Roofing of Arbuthnot, Maryland, an authorized agent of Garland DBS, will perform the work. This amount is within the adopted fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be required.
So, once again, Commissioners, your approval to award Garland DBS a contract to replace a flat section of the roof down at the Eldersburg Library. This section of the roof was installed over 25 years ago, and due to multiple leaks in the age of this area of this roof, it's recommended for replacement. Garland DBS will be replacing this section of the roof as well as removing any damage or wet insulation identified during a I R scan to see if there's any wet insulation. At that point, they'll yank out and add new.
Okay. And Ryan, for all those living in Arbuthnot, they appreciate the Arbuthnots.
I've only banned in Maryland for a year.
All good. Move the Board to approve the roof replacement at the Carroll County Public Library, Eldersburg Branch, to Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $39,481.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have a briefing discussion and possible decision on the Hampstead Annexation Number 45 Stag property. Good morning to you both.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
We actually have two annexations. We'll do them back to back. The first is Hampstead Annexation Number 45 and Westminster Annexation Number 79. I'm here with Hannah Weber, who's going to give you a brief presentation on both of these. These were shared with the Planning Commission this past Tuesday, March 19th, for informational purposes, and they had no additional comments on them. We've prepared a comment letter for both of these annexations, which you can either approve today, or we can come back to you on April 4th if you'd like to consider either of these at that time. I'll turn it over to Hannah.
Hannah's going to speak slowly.
Slowly.
Slow brains like mine.
Okay. Good morning Commissioners.
You've been pretty quick today, though.
Not really.
So, I'll drag it out. As Daphne introduced, we are here for two annexations. Up first, we have the Hampstead Annexation of the Stag Property. With us today in the audience is Jim Rourke from the town of Hampstead, as well as representatives of the petitioner and property owner. And they'll be here to answer any questions after the presentation. So, this is the annexation plot that was submitted by the town to the county. The annexation area is approximately 51 acres. You can see we are kind of bordering in the corner Huxville Road and the CSX railroad lines. Here is an overview of the Hampstead area. Here is the annexation area down to the southern end. And here is a zoom-in of the actual property. You can see we are adjacent to the corporate limits of Hampstead, so we would not create an enclave with this annexation. As stated before, this annexation area is approximately 51 acres. It is the current site of the Penguin Random House Distribution Center. The current zoning of this property with the county is I-1 industrial. The petitioners have requested to be placed in the I R restricted industrial in the town of Hampstead. So, because the uses are similar in intensities in the county's I-1 and the town of Hampstead's I R zoning district, there is no zoning waiver required for this annexation. When there is a zoning waiver required for annexations, it is the Board of County Commissioners' responsibility to approve that zoning waiver. But that's not the case for this one. The designated land use for this annexation is restricted industrial. This is taken from the 2010 Hampstead Community Comprehensive Plan, and the requested zoning of I R is consistent with this land use designation. The annexation area is in the existing service category for both water and sewer. And as always, we send the annexation packet out for any county agency comments. We received one comment from the Department of Economic Development, where they stated they provided support of this annexation. And then, our Bureau of Comprehensive Planning is recommending that this, for this annexation, the town give public notice by posting the annexation area prior to the date of public hearing to notify all of the adjoining property owners of the annexation. So, that is it for my presentation. As Daphne said, we are here for an informational briefing or the approval of the comment letter. This comment letter basically just details all of the county's comments in relation to this annexation. If you all are not ready to make a decision on that comment letter, we have time reserved on April 4th, and that would be just enough time to send the comment letter to Hampstead for their public hearing on April 9th.
And the comment letters.
Yeah. Why are they doing the annexation?
I'll let the town of Hampstead answer.
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Jim Rourke.
Oh, please come to a microphone.
Either one.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We were approached by Penguin Random House, who is a leasing Stag Properties Hampstead owns the parcel. But Penguin Random House approached us about getting onto the town water system. And so, to do that, we need to annex them into the town.
Hampstead, Hampstead's water, currently, there's no properties that are going outside?
There's a few, and basically, in our code, it's, the town council needs to approve connecting water to someone outside, and it's got to be a hardship case. And the way it's been lately is if there are places outside the town limits, but we have a water main running down the middle, we are almost forced to connect them because people don't, would give them another well, a new well permit when there is the ability to connect to town water.
Is the intent to move all properties that are on Hampstead water outside of Hampstead, you know, property into, or limits into Hampstead?
We would love to do that if they're contiguous, yes. There are a few that are not.
Gentlemen, any thoughts, comments, questions, motions?
I move the Board to approve, sign, and forward the comment letter to the town of Hampstead regarding Hampstead Annexation Number 45 Stag property.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Westminster Annexation Number 79 Cross Creek Enterprises.
Yes. So, another annexation. With us today, we have Andrea Gerhard from the city of Westminster to answer any questions. Here is the annexation plot. This includes this property, this annexation of this property, as well as some acreage along Malcolm Drive or Maryland 97. Here's an overview of the Westminster area indicating the annexation area. And here is a zoom-in to see that this annexation area is contiguous to the existing corporate limits of the city of Westminster. This annexation area is approximately .69 acres. It is improved with a vacant commercial building. It's my understanding that the new property owners would like to redevelop this property, so that's why, with, so they need water and sewer. So, that's why an annexation is necessary. The property is currently zoned C-2, commercial medium in the county. The requested zoning is B business with the city of Westminster. Because the uses are similar in intensity in the county's C-2 zoning and the city's business zoning, a zoning waiver is not required. The designated land use for this annexation area is commercial, taken from the city of Westminster 2009 Comprehensive Plan, and the requested zoning of business is consistent with its land use designation. The annexation area is in the existing service category for both water and sewer. And we did send this annexation packet out for county comments, and we received no comments from county agencies. We did receive a comment from the Maryland Department of Planning, M D P. They originally recommended that the city of Westminster request a zoning waiver from the county commissioners. It was their impression that because of the business zoning district in the city allowing for multifamily residential development, they, it was their understanding that the county's C-2 zoning did not allow for multifamily residential development, which is not true. So, once we explained to them that our C-2 zoning does allow for multifamily development, they agreed with the county's assessment that a zoning waiver is not required. And then again, the Bureau of Comprehensive Planning is recommending the city of Westminster give public notice by posting the property prior to the date of public hearing and notifying all adjoining property owners. And then the same as the previous annexation, we are here for an informational briefing or a possible decision on the comment letter. We have time scheduled on April 4th for a follow-up, and then the Westminster public hearing on April 22nd. Are there any questions?
The guidelines for the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, does it specifically include the word contiguous? Because the only reason I ask is, I mean, I look at this on a map. Contiguous, it's kind of debatable.
So, that's why they have to annex Maryland 97, and because it's owned by State Highway, we sent the comment transmittal out to State Highway for comments, and State Highway is okay with them annexing it. It doesn't change ownership. Andrea Gerhard can speak a little bit more to that, but the actual property itself is not contiguous, but because they're annexing a little piece of Maryland 97, that does make it contiguous.
Okay. And please understand, it's not really a question as much for the city, the Westminster. I'm more concerned about our own operating standards.
Is that, yeah, is that Carroll County, or is that any time municipalities are doing this?
It's a state requirement that it has to be contiguous to the existing corporate limits.
That's what I thought, so. Because the first thing I was thinking also was, okay, why are we doing this to?
It is common, sorry, sorry to interrupt. It is common that municipalities would annex a little piece of a roadbed to make it contiguous. It is in their growth area boundary, which means that it is in their plans to annex the property one day. Yeah.
This is not the reserve center, is it?
No, that was already annexed.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I move the Board of County Commissioners approve, sign, forward the comment letter to the city of Westminster regarding Westminster Annexation 79 Cross Creek Enterprises.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Kyler? All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next up, exercise option to purchase final approval proposed Critical Farms Program application on the David Swain and Grace Garst property. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning. Good to see everyone this morning. We're before you again, as you stated, to request final approval for Critical Farms Program applicant David Swain and Grace Garst. This is a David Swain and Grace Garst property. They're contract purchasers on Stone Cypher Road in Tawny Town, 43.957 acres. Will be retiring five lot rights. It's in District One. The appraised value of the property was $615,400, and the purchase price is $440,000. Our 52.5% is based off of the $440,000, which is lower, at a cost of $231,000. Here's where the Swain and Garst property sits in relation to other preserved property in the area. A picture of one of the fields out front along Stone Cypher Road. And once again, we're here for final approval of David Swain and Grace Garst contract purchasers of Stone Cypher Road in Tawny Town, 43.95 acres, five lot rights retiring in District One, at a cost to the county of $231,000.
Any questions, comments, motions?
What's the minimum Critical Farms Program allows?
Minimum?
Acreage.
75 acres or more is our best practice policy.
And we have done, acreage is much smaller.
As small as this?
Yes.
There was one done back in 1998 that was this small.
I apologize. There was one.
There was one done back in 1998 that was this small.
That was, so we typically don't go as small as 44 acres.
That's correct. That's correct.
The last one at this size was late 90s.
Yeah, it's been many years. They're usually in the 60s, close to 75.
So.
Sometimes bigger.
So, walk me through why this one at this particular size, this particular acreage?
The reason this was brought forth to the Advisory Board was because it was 100% qualifying soils. We also had a little heavier density at five lots on 43 acres, which is just under, you know, one lot for every eight acres. It also ranks very high, being in the priority preservation area and in the rural legacy area. And also, there was over 90% tillable on this property.
So, this would be the second one since 98?
Correct.
Out of all that we've done in the past, what, 40-plus years?
You mean, under 75?
Yes.
No, no, we've done others.
At 40, couple acres.
Yeah, in the 40s. That's correct.
It's not normally that low. We rarely ever go below the 60s.
I mean, I realize it's not codified, but I mean, I guess the question needs to be asked, should we not have some sort of procedural placement on this? I mean, if I'm not mistaken, if you could go back to that map for a second. So, we've got a county easement right there next to it, and then you've got a large open area, I assume, to what, the left of the property in question, as well as those below. Was this property ever subdivided off of another farm?
This property has been reconfigured in that farm.
This property was the parcel to the left, which is 76 acres. All of it in a total was together and has been an applicant to our program three different times.
Okay, so the piece to the left was also an applicant as well?
It has been reconfigured and taken off of the entire farm to be sold.
Okay. Now, is that two separate property owners, I assume, or is that the same?
Right.
The same owner right now. This Swain and Garst are contract purchasers.
I guess I'll just ask the obvious question. Critical farms, obviously, we're looking to protect farms from being developed. So, if we're looking to put 43.957 acres, the parcel on the right, why wouldn't we also potentially include that additional 75 at the same time to maximize not only the value to the Carroll County community for preservation, but also the usage of county funds and taxpayer money and do it at once? Because my question would be, if it's critical, why would you not do both at the same time versus if you were looking at, say, the 43.957 acres, why not put that into another program instead of Critical Farms? Because to me, that sort of seems a little conflicting, I guess would be the word I'd use.
It was eligible for all three other programs. It should have been vetted in our office, and the landowner told that it did not qualify, but it got pushed through. And the 76 acres, this person is not buying, so that could be developed. That could be sold to someone else. It is not a part of the application.
The main reason we haven't worked with the other properties is because it's a volunteer program. So, they have not, you know, no one has applied for that acreage. Yes, it does, you know, it is qualified for other programs. When this came into our office, I took it to the Advisory Board, which is part of the process, with no recommendation. They decided that they wanted to. They decided that they wanted to preserve this farm through Critical Farms. And then at a later date, it was brought to you and pushed through the program.
Is this the best place for it to go?
I think so.
Within Critical Farms?
I do not think so.
Okay, so, no, that, that's all right.
For the record.
No, it's all good. So, why?
Because it does not fit the criteria. This program has been reserved for larger farmer farms that, uh, and, and basically, my understanding, my feeling of it is, um, when you're putting that money out for Critical Farms, you're paying fifty-two and a half percent of their purchase price.
Right.
Or our appraised value, whichever is lower. And that is contracting them to apply to the state. So, we're essentially giving them that money to buy the farm, then they apply to the state, which could take up to five years to settle. And then when they settle, with every mouth applicant, we have a forty percent cost share. Our forty percent comes out of the fifty-two and a half that we've already paid them and then we receive any remaining balance, um, back. You have essentially lent, given that money to buy this property for up to five years at no interest.
Right.
And then are receiving that money back. So, for you, um, your benefit out of it is knowing that you're getting a really nice farm that's going to be preserved through your program at some point in time.
Right.
Um, that is what your benefit is. To me, this is a parcel.
Mm-hmm.
It has no infrastructure, it has no dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
I don't feel it's a farm. Um, it is a nice field, it is a nice parcel.
Sure, right.
Could have been preserved by all three other programs. My feeling is, the reason it's been pushed through is because the landowner couldn't afford it and, you know, that's, that's not really what we're in the business of doing. We're in the business of, you know, preserving farms with the best possible fit of program that they come into.
I think for the most part, any of these Critical Farms that people are applying for and originally, um, the program set up to compete with builders is because they may not have the cash available on hand to compete with a builder. So, that definitely is one of the reasons that this program was created. Um, we do want to get quality land. I don't think it get mu- gets much more quality than a hundred percent tillable soil, or a hundred percent qualifying soils and over ninety percent tillable. It would be nice to get more land all at once, but we just don't have all the willing applicants. Also, it would be nice if everyone was available for every program because we could use our money a little bit better, you know? So, and also, this is the only program that we're going to get any money back on.
But we're not getting back mon- we're not getting back any money than what you have basically put out for five years at no interest. We're getting a little bit of that back. Um, but you're not, it's not a cost benefit to you in, in any way. This is, this program is not, uh, a deal for the county.
So, looking at it from that perspective, especially as we're work, walking, walking ourselves into the budget discussions, every dollar, whether it's a, a dollar, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, million, it's taxpayer dollars. And is this the best approach for our taxpayers to be used on this program? We are lowering the, the thresholds to make something fit in, but it may not be the right fit.
And that's why we have four programs.
That's why we have multiple programs.
Right, and our job is supposed to be to figure out where these properties fit the best. And in my opinion, this was not it. Um, we now have, um, a small remaining balance left in the county program. We are holding applications that we could move with today, um, in order to save for these Critical Farms and that is county funds that are held up for up to five years before you see even a little bit of your money back. Um, that, you know, it's.
Every Critical Farms, uh, application is that situation. Every single one of them. They, they, they have to have it preserved within five years through the state or it reverts to the county for the fifty-two and a half percent that we've already invested.
But we also, yeah, go ahead, please.
We also, you know, the next application we take in could be fifty-one percent classified, you know, qualifying soils and it could also be ranked much lower.
But it would still qualify and if it's a much larger, nicer farmer's farm, which there are plenty out there, since we've had this, we've had a hundred and eighty acre Critical Farm we've brought to you.
Mm-hmm.
We've had a hundred and twenty acre farm that we have brought to you, Critical Farms, and a hundred acre. There's still plenty of large properties out there.
And this can fit into another reservation program?
All three.
Most of them can.
Rural Legacy, Mouth, and County Program.
Yeah, but this one being under fifty acres.
So, is it, is it within?
As a standard.
Yeah, so I apologize, Commissioner, I mean, is it, is it within our purview to ask for a reconsideration of what program this would best fall under the category of?
Absolutely, of course.
Hey, um, guys, I've had my hand up for like five minutes.
Okay, Commissioner Kyler, I apologize, we have the, we have a, a presentation up on the screen, so I don't see you at all, so I apologize for that. Commissioner Kyler, go right ahead.
It's better to ignore you anyway, no, I'm kidding.
Um, I, I've heard from various farmers and I've heard from various advisory board members who were unanimous for this. Um, hundred percent tillable, five lots.
Yeah.
The other thing I hear, which could be rumors, is, is getting this in could increase the likelihood of the seventy-six acres coming more quickly. Um, and I've said before, when we talk about rigid standards, um, every property's different. A hundred percent tillable, five lots.
Yeah.
Um, uh, if, if we delay this, we could see five, five building lots in there because a builder can better afford it. I just, I just think this is great and, uh, I haven't seen us turn down anything in Ag Pres because there wasn't enough money. And we do have one-time money that doesn't really help with our budget, so I think that would be a better topic to discuss than, than what else we could do instead of this. And I, I just think, uh, considering we're over three-quarters of the way to the, the goal on this, I, I just feel like this is a good property and, and I, I have a problem. I mean, it's up to us, but I have a problem and the farmers all want it and the board's set up with this group as unanimous about it for us to decide or wrong.
If I could, uh.
Well, I, I think, um, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Commissioner Kyler. The sticking point for me is if there are other programs that allow for this forty-three or forty-four acres to be a, be eligible for, then shouldn't we look at one of those programs as opposed to lowering the, the standard of the Critical Farm program, which is a seventy-five acre, uh, minimum? I mean, it's, it's one thing if it's, okay, it's seventy-five acres and let's get down to sixty-five, but we're cutting it down to, you know, sixty percent of that, you know, uh, allowable, you know, minimum. So, that, that's what I'm thinking, that's all. Uh, I want to do what's right, that's all.
And, and I understand, but I, if I understand right, the, uh, the advisory board is well aware of the three different races could be done.
Yeah.
Based on, um, maybe the buyer, I'm not sure, they thought this was by far the best one. And again, I don't think we're, uh, lowering any standards. Again, if you had seventy-six acres and it was fifty percent tillable, you've got less tillable ground than this, you know? I, I just think the five lots and a hundred percent tillable makes this way more doable.
God bless you.
Yeah. I know, that's what, that's what caught my eye as well, the same thing, that you've got such a large tillable amount of property within this. I apologize, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, I just want to say that there, um, not all farmers are for this. There are some that are not. Um, one is sitting behind me, who was a previous program manager for many years and a, you know, longstanding dairy farmer in the community, uh, who is not for this. Uh, it was eligible for all three other programs. The advisory board, you know, was presented in a certain way. It is a nice tillable parcel, absolutely without a doubt. You have a hundred and eighty acre farms, a hundred and eighty-eight acre farm that, of course, is not going to be a hundred percent tillable. It might only be sixty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Still a lot of acres and a nice farmer farm. It's all in how, you know, you, you want to spend your money, but taking, there's been many, many farms in the past, and I've been here for six years, um, that have been turned down because of the size requirement, that have been larger than this forty couple acres. So, if you take this in, you're going to be setting that precedent and you could very well have some angry people out there who wanted to use this program and were denied. And now, all of a sudden, you're letting it in. So, that, that's another big fear that I have, you know, that that's going to cause some issues in the future.
I think all things are considered when we, when we look at a Critical Farm. You know, I mean, if there's anything to argue about this one is the size and nothing else. Absolutely nothing else.
Right.
In my opinion. You know, others that have been turned down haven't been just because their size, you know? It's, it's just the nature of the beast and how every farm is different. You know, we've had a luxury and we still may afford some amount of luxury to take on bigger farms if and when they come in.
Are these standards or are they guidelines when it comes to, you know, the seventy-five acres?
I'd say they're all guidelines.
So, they're guidelines, not standards?
They are what we have followed for many, many years, well, since back to nineteen ninety-eight.
The other precedents that we've set, whether we, you know, recognize or not is, every time you come in front of us with a piece of property, we're approving it. And that's been a precedence that we've set.
Well, we have not come to you with a property that did not meet all of the qualifications for that program.
Then the question is, why are you coming in front of us if we're not in a position that there's a divide and not a consensus?
Yeah, consensus was brought around by the advisory board. We had five farmers vote unanimously on this property.
No, we didn't.
To move it forward.
Okay. So, I, I, I think, I think, I think Commissioner Rossian asked an important question. Um, I'm, I'm okay with situations like this. There might, it sounds like there's a strong difference of opinion, but the buck stops here with the County, Board of County Commissioners and that's for everything.
Absolutely.
And we get accused of, you know, rubber stamping things sometimes. We do our homework, maybe that's what previous boards did, we shouldn't be doing that. You both have presided over the most successful Ag preservation program, maybe in the whole darn country, so your opinions matter. Uh, I do share concern, given the fact that we are in a interesting stage now and we're in a, we are in some budget, we have some budgetary constraints. We are at the same time looking at the Ag Pres program and deciding how that funding's really going to work out and you're, and, and me being someone who's a strong advocate of it, I can even say that. We're coming down to the wire, if we want to get to a hundred thousand, it's going to get even more difficult. So, all those things combined, to me, sound like a probably, probably pretty good time to make sure that we understand what the standards are and just trying to adhere to them the best possible. So, my issue isn't the fact that this is before us, and I don't think anybody was suggesting that. Um, in fact, I appreciate the, uh, the difference of opinion, I think that's where you get the solutions and I know all, all four agree with me as well, but now it does seem like a time where we probably need to make sure we're underst- we're following the guidelines or standards or whatever it is because we're interesting, we're entering, from a layman's perspective, it just seems to me we're entering, entering a very interesting and difficult time in this bland Pres program because we're get, we're trying to get to a hundred and it's going to get harder and harder and much more expensive. So, I don't know where we go from here, uh, uh, but I, I'm not entirely comfortable with moving forward.
Well, Commissioner Kyler, you have your hand up?
Yes, again, um, I'm very comfortable moving forward. And again, there's one time of money available, which I've mentioned before, that, that's ideal for Ag Pres, I don't think we're running out of money. And I think the point you made, as we get closer, it's going to get harder. Um, I don't remember the last one that was a hundred percent tillable and I think the five lots is way more important than whether it's, uh, forty-three, forty-four acres or, or whether it's a hundred. And, uh, I, I just think, and I think, and again, um, you mentioned somebody is against it, I've heard of one person against it. I've talked to a dozen or so who all thought this was a great idea and the advisory board, um, was a hundred percent that it was a great idea. And I just feel like if, if we're, and, and the buck stops on, who's on advisory boards, but if we appointed her there, um, I, I feel strongly, unless there's something really, really rotten, um, we follow them.
Well, so I, I've listened to, uh, the conversation and I, uh, you know, certainly do not disagree that this is land that should be agriculturally preserved, I don't disagree with that whatsoever. I also take the point that, uh, the standards that we have are effectively guidelines, that we can be flexible with them as we need to, that certain properties may, uh, require different, uh, uh, understandings of them, uh, given their nature. Uh, but I also take the point that if there are programs for which this property is better suited, I would like to understand why, um, from the perspective of the board, they felt that this particular program, uh, would be better than the other three programs. And I respect them tremendously and I respect their views, but I also respect the two of you. And I, you know, within, for the year and a half we've been here, uh, I cannot recall an instance when the two of you had a difference of opinion, not that that's a bad thing, but what that indicates to me is that there are issues that still need to be considered. Um, so I do not oppose putting this into Ag Pres, but I'm not convinced that this is the appropriate program for it. So, I don't know whether that means that we, uh, request that the board look at this again or whether the two of you, in your expertise, look at this again and say, well, maybe it's better suited for this program instead and take that to the board and let them determine whether or not that's appropriate. Um, so I, that, that's basically where I stand. I mean, I have the utmost respect for that board, I have the utmost respect for the two of you. Um, and, and again, seeing that difference of opinion, uh, again, there's not a dispute about whether or not this, this land should be in Ag Pres, just a question under what method.
Correct. And with our county program, people can come in as contract purchasers.
Right.
And we can still help them, um, as long as their contract permits the time, we can be, when we settle with them through the county program, they can then purchase the farm at the same time. So, it is, you know, it takes a little bit longer, it's not a hundred and twenty days through the county program, but it is still an option for people who are contract purchasers that don't meet the qualifications and criteria of the Critical Farms program.
Hey, Ken, is your hand still up or?
No, yep, no, it's back up.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I have one, I have one more question. What I heard from some of the farmers is that if this were one of the other two programs, these owners probably wouldn't move forward with it. Is that true?
I, I don't know if I can answer that, I, I don't know that for sure.
I do know that Mr. Swain has, has just about secured funding, um, through USDA in order to buy this property. I don't know how much, um, but there's other avenues out there. We're not a bank, we're not a lending agency. Um, you know, they, they can find other ways or we could have took it through contract purchaser through the county program and helped them just as well.
So, I think, um, yeah, Commissioner Kyler, it's a.
So, the answers, the answers, no, they probably wouldn't pursue one of the other two, but that's not our problem?
No.
I thought we were, I thought we were going Ag Pres, sorry.
It, it sounds like the answer is, I don't know. They, they, I, I think they need to revisit that question, it's a very valid question and get a. It's a very valid question and get a straight answer on whether they can or, or would or would not go into the program.
I guess the question would be, are we willing to help everyone that comes to us with a farm, purchase them? Or are we going to use our guidelines, our standard best practices to determine which program they're good for?
Okay, so, so-
There's got to be some line.
Well, the, and that's why you do what you do and you staff and you advise.
Like I said, we've turned down many.
And we, we make the decisions on that path forward or not. But that, that's here and that's what Commissioner Garin, you know, shared earlier. Um, I think, uh, you know, Commissioner Kyler, going back to one-time funds, you and I have talked about this prior and I'm not against that. However, if that is an approach we're going to take, then that needs, I believe, should be considered, uh, when we establish our budget. So for fiscal year twenty-five, if that's a path forward, that's what we'll be doing as opposed to inaction today and using one-time funds. I'd rather set a precedence with the new budget than at the end of this budget. So I, I, I think that we honestly should go back with some of the questions that we've provided and, you know, come back in a, a couple of weeks and say, here is how those have been answered. And we can either make a, a final decision then, you know, uh, that would be favorable for everybody involved. I mean, that's, that, that's what I would like to do.
Can that, can that happen in two weeks?
Seems like a compromise.
Again, I, I hate to see five building lots on one hundred percent tillable property.
I know.
But if, uh, if that's not a strong enough factor, I, I don't know what is. But so-
Yeah.
Can they come back in two weeks with more information?
Uh, that depends on if he wants information from the advisory board or just information that we can put together for him.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a process. If he gets out of this program, he's going to be starting over in something else.
I'm not saying getting out of a program, saying, going back to him, saying, here's the situation, here's the comments and questions. And he's probably watching or somebody's going to get back to him anyway. How would you answer these questions, you know? Going back to the advisory board and having that conversation in two weeks, get it back on the agenda for early April sometime and we'll make a decision. I mean, that's my recommendation. Cause I'm not, I'm not comfortable right now moving forward with what is proposed. The only really valuable piece is the tillable and the five lots. I mean, I, it, you don't see that, you know?
So the soils is what's a hundred percent and the tillable's over ninety.
I apologize, the soils.
No, that's all right. I wanted to correct Mr. Kyler just for, uh, information sake.
It's always fun to correct Mr. Kyler, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
But, uh, yeah, so my, my recommendation is that, um, we do not take action except, you know, direct staff to come back to us in two weeks.
Do we need a motion on that or is it just simply by consent?
And what are we getting exactly?
Well, that's-
Well, okay, so first of all, um, I know that there's questions about whether or not they would pull out of our ag pres program to go somewhere else. Uh, if we decided to, uh, we decided ultimately that they would be better suited for a different category under the ag pres, uh, program. Um, I believe there were, uh, questions about why these particular acres, without any agricultural buildings or, or other functions that were, uh, uh, part of them, uh, being considered. I think Commissioner Gordon had, uh, one other question about, or maybe it wasn't. Cause you, Commissioner Garin, if somebody had a question about, what was it? Maybe, was it lot, wasn't the lots, was it?
Well, I mean, well, we want to make sure we have better understand the seventy-five lot, seventy-five acre issue, but you might be referring to something else that I had mentioned.
Okay, that, that, I apologize, that, that was, okay.
Maybe that was it.
I apologize.
Seventy-five at seventy-five. I mean, it's just-
And then, uh, from the board, you know, why they felt that, uh, specifically this category was appropriate for this particular property. And if anybody has any other questions or thoughts, you know, feel free to-
Well, it's not just why this category, but what other categories could be a fit and just as suitable.
And again, I'll reiterate, I mean, I don't think any of us would deny that this is, you know, land that should be agriculturally preserved. And please carry that back as well. It's not the que, it's not a question of the, the substance, it's a question of the, the condition.
Yeah, and, and they buy land without buildings on it because that's what's available. You know, I mean, and it's cheaper.
Fair enough.
I mean, I, I, having a farmstead or not, I mean, I think a farmer, if he could buy, you know, open land without any, you know, falling down buildings or anything like that would be a plus. Rather than buying something with a bunch of infrastructure they can't use that they have to pay for.
I take that point. Gentlemen, anything else? All right, thank you both very much.
All right, we greatly appreciate you, Tom.
Thank you to you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So next we come to public comment. Chris, do we have anybody on the phone for us today?
Yes, sir, we do have one caller. Caller one, if you could unmute yourself by using star six and identify yourself, you'll have three minutes for a public comment this morning.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, hear you, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, Catherine Adelaide, Carroll County Republican Central Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, make a general comment virtually today. I really appreciate that. Due to the recent publicity on the recreational pot, a constituent texted me just yesterday that they had read my editorial in the Northern News regarding Article Six of the Constitution, the supremacy clause, and asked a really brilliant question, namely, what did the Maryland Constitution say about all of this? And I'm sorry, I didn't think of that myself. They looked it up and sent it to me. And indeed, the Maryland Constitution acknowledges the supremacy of federal law. According to Article Two of the Maryland Constitution, quote, "The Constitution of the United States and laws made or which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States are and shall be the supreme law of the state. And the judges of this state and all the people of this state are and shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or law of this state to the contrary notwithstanding." So clearly, federal law takes precedence over state laws within Maryland's jurisdiction. It ensures that the state's legal framework aligns with the broader principles set forth by the United States Constitution. So I was very grateful for that, uh, additional legal, uh, information. And again, uh, one of the arguments is that the voters have voted. So as you can see, a mere majority vote is, um, you know, we're not a mobocracy, we're a constitutional republic. So I know that's one of the things, well, the voters have voted and this is what it says, the people of the state shall be bound thereby. So they are bound by the federal constitution, not just federal employees, not on federal property. I also want to thank, uh, Commissioner Rothstein and Commissioner Vigliotti about the small pot proceeds that are going to come in here. Not that to me, this is blood money, none of it should be considered to fund anything, much less a, uh, budget deficit. Um, but these cannabis sales, you know, going into the blueprint and, uh, Commissioner Rothstein really said, this is a carrot on the stick. So I'm glad you're wise to that old trick. There is a, an article by Informed Carol by Brian Thompson, I think from July of twenty-three, that also addresses the issue of the lie of the proceeds. I will be, uh, sending that to you by email. So, uh, again, thank you for your time, appreciate your work and God bless you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Roberta, do we have anybody here today who would like to offer public comment?
We do. We have, I think, six if I counted correctly.
All right, so you're welcome to come up and give public comments. You'll be allotted three minutes. This is not a, uh, you know, question and answer debate kind of forum. Uh, if you do have any questions, we're happy to take those down and get back in touch with you with any information that we, uh, need to provide. Uh, this is primarily about hearing you and offering respect to you to hear you out. So anybody who has, uh, filed for comment, please, uh, please write them out.
Okay, first one I have is Jennifer Belt. The microphone here. Sit your name and address and your comment.
Hello, I am Jennifer Belt. I live on Stone Road in Westminster. I wasn't expecting to go first on this, so I hope that my comments, you know, apply directly to what is to be discussed. But, um, the product that's being applied to the farm field across from my house has been, um, really disrupting our life for the past, I think about three years. I've lived in this area for a total of ten. I lived on Flickinger for about seven. And then my husband and I built a house, um, on Stone Road. And the summers have been stolen from us. I grew up in central Pennsylvania. I know, uh, typical farm smells. My best friend was a chicken farmer. I lived across the road from cows. Um, this is not a typical farm smell. It smells like rotting flesh. When it's applied, it's, it's to be raked into the ground and then covered back up. But essentially what's that, what that is doing is creating a huge dust cloud that's then blowing across my property. It's coming in my house. The particles are too small to essentially keep out. We can't have our windows open. We can't eat on our porch or our deck. My stuff is coated in an orange film from the stuff that's being applied and then blows over. And it's just, you know, if this stuff is allowed to be applied on all of the, the beautiful farmland of Carroll County, I don't see young families continuing to move into this area because it is so, um, disruptive and honestly disgusting. Um, so those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Next is Susan Belt.
Uh, so I'm Susan Belt. Uh, I live on Flickinger Road. It's on the corner of Stone. Uh, we're neighbors with Jen. And, um, what I'd like to do is read the letter that my husband wrote because he's, he's a farmer. He's, he was an ag major in, in college, although did a, uh, wasn't able to farm because he wasn't born into a farm family. So he actually owns a big lawn care company. Um, but he does follow a nutrient management, uh, program on our farm. We have beef cattle, so. So anyway, um, the application, so this has to do with the industrial sludge utilization permit, um, legislation. The applica, application of this type of fertilizer in our rural residential community has created a situation where we cannot go out in the summer and enjoy our farm. The smell is unbearable. It reminds me of the combination of a sewage treatment plant and a rendering facility. The smell is long lasting and it does not go away in days. It takes weeks and redevelops after a rain. I raise beef cattle and my family is used to the normal country farm smells. This is not a usual organic fertilizer smell. It is much harsher and long lasting. Last year, the farm across the street applied hundreds of thousands of gallons to the fields. This is no exaggeration. There were, there were multiple tractor trailer tankers going into the fields every day, usually at least four per hour, all day long and well into the night. The applications were done from April until the first of December. I contacted the Department of Agriculture about this issue and I was told the farmer was doing all the paperwork he needed to do in order to make these applications. One of my issues with this is that currently it is a self-reporting requirement he is following and there's no official verification that the amount applied is actually recorded correctly. I believe it's very possible from the number of trailer loads going into the field that the application rate was much higher than recorded, but there's no way to tell currently as far as I understand. These food processors need to get rid of their byproduct and the farmer is willing to take as much as he can haul. He pays nothing for it and I wonder if he is getting compensated for disposing of this material. We're very worried with the volume of material going in the ground that is affecting the quality of the groundwater. Our wells recently had increases in E. coli counts and I believe it is directly related. The runoff is also an issue. My neighbor has a pond that used to have turtles and fish in it, but last year all of them died. Once again, I relate, once again, I relate this to the applications. During the drier summer months, as the applications were being done, clouds of dust moves over our farm and house carrying the smell. And also our cows get a lot more fly traffic from this. I know my time's up, so.
You can finish your sentence, that's okay. Finish your sentence.
Um, this is both a quality of life issue and a health issue. So do you want me to, I have a few more sentences.
Just a couple more, okay, go ahead.
Um, I do not believe this type of industrial material should be allowed in such close proximity to homes and residential wells. I do not believe there has been enough study into the environmental effects of the health and impact to the community. I understand as a farmer, it is hard to make ends meet, but just because this is a cheap source of fertilizer that will help dispose of an unwanted industrial byproduct doesn't mean it should be used, especially under these circumstances in this community. And we appreciate the fact that our local delegates, April Rose, has been communicating with us and we really appreciate them bringing this forward and we hope the county can make any appropriate decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roberta?
Next is Jason Green.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Jason Green. I live at twenty-six oh-two Robert Arthur Road and am a resident of Mayberry. I'm here today for my family and sup, and to support my community with the goal of making a difference in resolving a quality of life issue for two communities in District One. I want to make it clear that I support farming and the rich history it has in our county. I've lived here my entire life, so I'm very familiar with the typical spring smells that come with farming and the spreading of manure. We're here today because of something different, an industrial waste known as DAF, which comes from chicken, which comes from a chicken rendering plant in Virginia and takes your breath away. This is affecting the use of our properties and our property values. We don't just endure this for a few weeks in the spring as over the last two years, this operation has continuously spread from March through December, providing little, uh, little to no relief. In my opinion, this operator is not farming. They're simply using loopholes in the law to create a dumping ground for profit. According to the Maryland Department of Agriculture, he is the only person in Carroll County using this industrial waste. Both of the properties, one owned and one leased, are in District One with one property currently being used as a hub for operations in Pennsylvania. With only one user, any action you take will not affect any other farming operations in the county. I've talked to several farmers and their reaction tells me all I need to know. They understand the negative impacts this waste would have on their communities and therefore do not use it. They choose to support their communities, over lining their pockets from big industry. To me, that's what being Carroll Countyan is all about. Looking out for your neighbors and doing what's right. I want to commend our state delegation for being engaged on this issue since December and we hope something is passed that brings some level of relief. As you know, and we've heard it this morning, Annapolis is very unpredictable with industry and special interests seemingly having the inside scoop at every twist and turn of a session. I've heard many times that Annapolis never gets it right and we hold our breath each year wondering what's coming next. If we truly believe that we know better, then why is this board waiting for this, on the state? We have the power to immediately help our communities. We are here today requesting your help in getting our lives and communities back so we can once again enjoy our little piece of this great county. We're requesting you take immediate action as Caroline County has in instituting a moratorium on the storage of DAF. This will provide us some level of immediate relief and provide you time to evaluate potential state actions and the ability to draft new zoning regulations to control the storage of this destructive material. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Next, Kathy Green. Plu, you can move it even farther down if you need to.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Green. I live at twenty-six oh-two Robert Arthur Road in Westminster. I'm a lifelong resident of the county who has lived in Mayberry for twenty-four years. I fully support farming practices and respect the heritage of farming in our county. I am here about a quality of life issue that has nothing to do with farming and everything to do with industrial waste, greed, disregard for community and environmental harm. Two years ago, life as we knew it ended when our community became a storage and dumping ground for DAF industrial waste. The sludge is stored year round in an open pit and dumped on the land from March through December. The smell of DAF is unbearable. Imagine a field of rotting flesh. It takes your breath away for weeks after each application. Due to repeated dumping, we literally cannot go outside for months at a time and endure the smell of storage year round. The fields are wasteland and- The fields are wasteland and crops do not grow. The waste comes from a plant in Virginia, and the farmer is paid in excess of $1,000 per truckload. Trucks come and go at all hours, making our single-lane road impassable rather than use the dual-lane Mayberry Road entrance. Sadly, despite our pleas for help, our community has become a waste disposal site for big industry. In addition to the horrific smell and traffic, I am concerned about long-term environmental and health impact. Research shows high levels of heavy metals, PFOS, and disease in the waste, which runs into our wells and streams. In fact, the same hauler and sludge used in our community has been cited by the DEP for contaminating wells in Antrim Township, Pennsylvania. I am grateful to the state delegation for drafting legislation and the Caroline County Commissioners for leading at the local level. Sadly, we have not received the same support. In open session, we were referred to as inpatient citizens, somewhat damaged by this practice. Let me be clear, we have patiently waited for more than a year for our response while our quality of life and community has been destroyed. Emails unanswered, requests for community meetings ignored, and no action taken on our behalf. I do not understand how storage building heights and solar panel fields constitute a quality of life issue, but industrial waste does not. All along, the board has had the local authority to regulate DAF storage. If passed, the bill will still allow you to create local regulations. Time and again, the board has stated their disdain for state control, but when given the opportunity to act locally on this issue, have not taken action. I ask that you pass an immediate moratorium on DAF storage to allow time for the legislative process to conclude, state regulations to be written, and for the county to address this issue through zoning. Failing to act will allow for additional DAF storage pits to open in any part of the county. Imagine a DAF lagoon, like the one in Caroline, sitting next to a housing subdivision, an incorporated town, or your home. Please take action to stop the negative impact of DAF industrial sludge on our quality of life, health, and environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next is Bradley Rodrick.
Hi, my name is Brad Rodrick. I live on Humbert Schoolhouse Road. I echo a lot of the comments I've heard from the other neighbors. It's been a rough two weeks, not even March 15th when the spreading could start. Prior to that, we live right on the Maryland-Pennsylvania line. They've been moving material across the line. They've been spreading in Pennsylvania. The sloshing of the DAF materials coming out of the trucks, coming on our roads, zonings come in, told them to clean up the road. They've issued a 30-day cease and desist, at least for the movement of material across the Pennsylvania line. There is one bad actor in Carroll County. There are about four in the entire state. This one bad actor in Carroll County is the reason why the entire Carroll County delegation has been sponsoring this legislation at the state level. I commend them for taking the lead on this. Where I'm struggling right now is wondering where Carroll County government is on this issue. Caroline County is taking an active role, supporting their constituents, focusing on the storage. So Humbert Schoolhouse Road, the application's bad enough, the storage is exacerbates, exacerbating the problem exponentially. We're not feeling that, that our responses are being taken care of. Has anyone come out and smelled DAF? Has anyone come to our farms and wanted to take a nice whiff of this? It will turn your stomach. We are asking that you follow Caroline County's lead. The legislation that they're putting in place should be in effect, but it won't come into effect till July or October. You have a chance to fix this right now by issuing the same moratorium that Caroline County does. It affects one bad actor. There's only one farmer, owner-operator, storing DAF in Carroll County. You can fix this tomorrow. Last thing I'll say, I'm tired of taking off from work. I'm tired of going down to Annapolis. I'm tired of taking pictures. I'm tired of calling all the various zoning, calling the Commissioners. Commissioner Vigliotti, I've sent you four emails on my own. My other neighbor has sent two. I have not gotten one response. Please listen to what we're saying. This has been a two-and-a-half-year awful experience for all of us. It is gut churning. It is stomach churning. It's coming into our waterways. I echo the, the turtles, the fish. I have a pond. My neighbor said the same thing. Take action, please, and at least come up and see us, visit us, see what we're dealing with. You have a chance to fix this right now, and you could end this immediately with a moratorium on the storage. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the last speaker is Randy Cole.
I am going to, my name is Randy Cole. I live at 2647 Robert Arthur Road. I'm right across the street from Ground Zero, and it is unpleasant, so. It's very hard and sad for me to explain in three minutes how 45 years of life developing 100% wooded lot into a beautiful homestead and is being destroyed in only two years. Our quality of life and enjoyment country living has been devastated by the most putative stench of this industrial sludge being applied to farms and being stored into old open pits. These are the same old manure pits that were there 45 years ago when I purchased the property. We have seen as many as 48 tanker trucks delivering and unloading a sludge in a 10-day period. The owner of their property mistakenly told me he has seen as many as 20 trucks in one day. These 48 trucks at a minimum delivered 250,000 to 300,000 gallons of sludge. This goes on continuously from March to December and is stored all year long. How much sludge can be applied and stored in old open pits for this long a period without affecting our environmentally beautiful community? Outdoor gatherings are non-existent because of the amount of deliveries and spreading. We have seen the fields dark brown to black, saturated with the sludge and not being turned under perthler requirements. There is no escape of this stench outside and very little trying to go into your house and closing the windows. The bad actors do whatever they want and whenever they want with no consequences and have total disregard for the community. At one nutrient management meeting, I asked if there was an additive that could be added to help the awful stench. I believe it was a Denali representative chuckled and said that could cost a million dollars. That is a small fear compared to our home values diminishing being located in the stench and the storage areas. There has to be some kind of laws or regulations for the amount of sludge applied and how it can be stored environmentally safe, not in old open pits for the community to smell. We, the residents of Carroll County, elect our legislatures to help and protect our beautiful Carroll County. Please help us with this terrible ordeal. If any commissioner or committee member in this session had to experience or live near this nightmare, I'm sure the outcome would be for the community. Again, please help our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Chris, I believe we have somebody else on the line now?
Yes, sir. We do have another caller. Any caller that called in the past few minutes, please unmute yourself by using star six, and you'll have three minutes to make public comment, and please identify yourself before we begin. Use star six on your keypad.
Yes, hi. My name is Bobby Moore. I'm a resident of Carroll County. Hello.
Thank you. We can unmute.
Yes. Okay. One second, please. Trying to maneuver all of this. Yes, I am a resident of Carroll County, and I, I echo many of the sentiments that have been stated here today. I am against recreational pot, and I request that you amend the zoning ordinance, ordinance to follow federal law, that neither recreational cannabis nor any other federally illegal operation can be a permitted use in Carroll County. I am the mother of four adult children. And one of my children has, my eldest child was, is now 35, and when she was in school, you know, they said that, that marijuana is the gateway drug. I have now confirmed that through not only many other sources, but through my own personal history with this as part of a family that is, has been tormented by this and the other drugs that are in use right now through marijuana. My son has been in rehab and facilities for over seven years, and I'm grateful that he is even alive today. I also have a part of a letter from Super Truth dated March 5th. Joyce Mahoney, the executive director, has been a social worker there, excuse me, for 30-plus years, and is very familiar with the aftereffects of drug and alcohol abuse to families in the community. Marijuana is not like cigarettes. It's a hallucin, a hallucinogen and a toxin that affects the brain over long periods of use. The CDC and SAMSHA have much research on the use of marijuana. Please look it up. It is a sad day when those who run our government decide how to create streams of revenue on the backs of their citizens, encouraging them to use habituating toxins. The, the gelatine of those in government watching marijuana growers and distributors making fistfuls of money is sad and irresponsible. I beg and plead with you to consider this as a strong reason why there is no way or reason that we should support the recreational use of marijuana when it is against the family unit, our individual lives, minds, and health, and federal laws and regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Are we in open admin?
Well, we're about to go now, yeah. We're, so now we are in open admin. Anybody have anything for open admin?
Just want to let you know, Mike Fowler just reached out and did say that the sludge bill is moving forward and will pass. So that's, that's good news from the state. And, you know, again, this is not a give and take, but the Caroline County, you know, in Mako, we are having conversations, at least I am, along with Commissioner Kyler, with Caroline County and understanding their moratorium and their processes that they are putting in place. As of, I think it was last week, I didn't think they were in place yet, but that's something I'll follow up and I'll take that action. So, yeah. But it was very, very valid comments and, you know, gonna just continue to follow up in the next week or so.
Yeah, I apologize. I was just gonna say real quick, so Tim, if we decided to go the way of a moratorium, because I know there's been some discussion over the last couple of months about what authority we actually do have and where, but if we have it within our authority to institute a moratorium, what would the process be for that?
It would be similar to the solar moratorium. We actually had a zoning, zoning text amendment that we adopted after a public hearing and advertising.
So basically, we would have to have a public hearing?
You'd have to advertise.
Advertise, have the public hearing, and then institute the moratorium for what, a set amount of time or?
Set amount of time, and it cannot be indefinite, and it has to be a for a specific purpose, a definable purpose. And that would be to study the impact of these facilities in Carroll County, gather evidence, but there has to be a reason for it, and it can't be indefinite.
So knowing that, I have absolutely no concern about taking up the issue of a moratorium in future sessions. Like, as once Commissioner Rothstein has done his homework, so to speak, I'll certainly reach out to members of our delegation for more information, and if anybody else has any other information, you know, to bring to bear, I certainly want to hear that. But no, I have absolutely no compunction whatsoever, knowing that we have the authority to do a moratorium to consider a moratorium, so.
And the sludge bill should be in effect one July, so. Anyway, okay.
So I, yeah, I appreciate that. I think that as soon as we know what that bill's really gonna look like, we can go ahead and evaluate it, and if it doesn't remedy this situation and solve these people's problems, then we would immediately bring it, have this discussion regarding a moratorium. This is the kind of stuff that, who, people who know me, this is the kind of issues that light a fire in me, because we don't really have to rely on anybody to fix problems in the county, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm willing to wait to see how this bill makes it through. So I appreciate that, Commissioner Rothstein, but it sounds like this issue may not be gone. I, I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty simple solution. You can't do it. So I don't know what that legislation looks like, but I appreciate people coming in and, you know, to everybody who's still watching and hasn't turned off the TV yet, this is what open session is for. So do not hesitate to come in here with legitimate concern, you know, you know, I mean, and think things through. We don't have the opportunity to give and get, do a give and take, but this is what we're here for. And you have this amazing form of government where you can just walk in and get up to that microphone and have three minutes. So take advantage of it, Carroll County, and don't, if you don't get the remedy you want, or you don't get the response you need, I mean, we try to do our best, but if you don't, just come on in, and let's have a, let's hear from you. Thank you.
Those with the solutions are closest to the problem.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else for open admin?
Nope.
All right, we'll move into agenda review for the week of March 25th, 2024. Monday, nobody's doing anything to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Wond, I jumped ahead. I apologize. How are you today?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so Monday, March 25th, 2024, thank you, Commissioner Rothstein.
I'm here for you.
I appreciate that, I really do. Thank you. Nothing going on Monday. Tuesday, Board of Commissioners open session relating to agency budget hearings for fiscal year '25. Wednesday, March 27th, Commissioner Kyler will be at the Carroll County Community College Board of Trustees meeting. Thursday, March 28th, we will have a delayed open session that morning as we will be attending the Sheriff's Office graduation and awards ceremony in Hampstead. 11 o'clock AM, the Board of Commissioners will begin their open session. Item one, legislative update. Item two, contract award approval of a maintenance contract for a Kohler generator of Department of Public Works. Item three, grant to approve, to submit application and acceptance of award for Wakefield Valley restoration design. Item four, grant to approve, submit application and acceptance of award for Georges Murphy Run Restoration Opportunities. Obviously, public comments, open admin, and agenda review, and then we will be going into closed for land acquisition. We will be going into recess and then reconvening at 1 o'clock PM for further agency budget hearings, and at 6:30 PM, Commissioner Kyler will be at the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council at the library in Finksburg. Friday, the offices are in closed in observance of Good Friday, and obviously, that is Easter weekend, and Commissioner Garen has the podcast for that week. Any additions, corrections, or changes? Then into the week of April 1st, Monday shows nothing. Tuesday, April 2nd, we will have open session beginning at 8 o'clock AM. Proposed budget work session, the first of several, with Mr. Ted Zaleski. Wednesday, April 3rd, we will have Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Gordon will be attending. Thursday, April 4th, open session. Priority Carroll will include National Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation and Fair Housing Month proclamations. Item one, legislative update. Item two, public hearing for consideration of the Carroll County Bureau of Housing Streamlined Annual Plan for Fiscal Year '24. Item three, public discussion decision on comment letter for Hampstead, or no, we don't, we don't need these because we've approved them, right?
That's right.
Right?
Wait, yes.
Right.
Okay, so item three for that comment letter is gone. Item four for the annexation for Westminster is also removed. So item five becomes item three. I'm just gonna read these the way that they're listed so I don't get confused with the numbers. Okay. Item five, request approval for the 2024-25 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Application. Item six, bid approval and contract award for broadband expansion, expansion. Item seven, approval to purchase seven wall-mounted benches, benches for the Sheriff's Office. Item eight, contract award replacement of water service laterals on Carroll Highlands Road and Sweet Air Lane. Item nine, contract award installation of residential water meter vaults on Calorama Road. Did I say that right?
You did, actually. That's good.
Item 10, approval to purchase Greenwood Avenue Properties, Lance Wolf Beavers, approach, approval to purchase Carroll County Regional Airport Properties, Criders Church, Parcels 2350, Miller Parcel 1, Transal Crone Parcel 7, Collins Parcel 13A, Burton Parcel 13B. Item 11, contract award Board of Elections Office and Warehouse. Obviously, public comments, open admin, agenda review. We will be going into recess and then reconvening at 1 o'clock PM for further budget work sessions. Friday, April 5th shows nothing. And Saturday, April 6th at Freedom Park, Commissioner Rothstein will be attending the Field One unveiling and dedication, and Commissioner Rothstein also has the podcast for that week. Any additions, corrections, or items to be changed? With that, I need a motion to- With that, I need a motion to go into recess until 1 o'clock PM.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
We, do we want to discuss moving that up at all or is that, we just want to stick with 1 o'clock?
Okay. If you want to move it up in time, that's okay, I mean, I'm.
I just thought I'd throw it out there. It looks like there's a, I'm getting a no, I'm getting a, okay, forget it. It's not a motion.
Your colleague's been angry.
I can read everybody's faces at by this point.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are in recess until 1 o'clock PM.